Great, yes.
Okay.
You know what, I'm gonna ask Angela to make copies of this so that I can make sure they have a copy when we are through tonight for everyone to take if they want to take it so that they have a reference material.
Let me have that right over.
Go ahead.
Okay, call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Liz.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Legay. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember LaCron.
Yeah.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Thank you, Liz. We'll start with the consideration of authorizing the town manager to institute emergency procurement procedures in order to expedite the repairs and restoration of Golden Eagle Park and storm water system in response to the October 2, 2018 storm event, and authorize the reallocation of funds from the deferral of capital projects to pay for the repairs and restoration of Golden Eagle Park. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as the mayor was reading, what we're trying to do tonight is try to give you a thorough picture of the damage that we have over at Golden Eagle Park and try to give you what we think is the strategy to address that issue. As you're aware, on October 2, 2018, we had an unprecedented storm that dropped between two to three inches of rainfall in a very short period of time. The rainfall wasn't so much the problem as much as it was the sediment and debris that flowed through the washes that ultimately end up at Golden Eagle Park. As you're aware, Golden Eagle Park is really part of our storm water management system for the town. It's really intended to be designed for that purpose so that homes don't flood and the streets that basically that we have convey the water to the washes. And then if they're in and around Golden Eagle Park, the washes flow into Golden Eagle Park as well as culverts that go under Golden Eagle Boulevard. And then we have a dam that most people aren't even aware of. We have a dam over at Golden Eagle Park that's hidden from view. And one of the issues we had is so much debris flowed through the park and was not able to actually get into the dam because what we could have is a trash trap, and that filled up with all the debris, not allowing the debris to flow into the dam. We have already, after two weeks of assessing the damage that we had at the park, the staff started putting together a plan. As you remember, when I did a report from town manager, we had a turnkey arrangement that could have cost the town $600,000 that would do the full cleanup and also restore the park. But the staff and I, not being comfortable with that number, started looking at other options, and we were able to get that down to around $400,000 plus another $100,000 for the wash maintenance that has to be done concurrently. What we're hoping to obtain from you tonight is not only to give you an overview of our strategy, but also to allow the town manager to have authorization to proceed with our procurement of these services to get the park restored. We have a number of other user groups that use the park, the ball fields in particular. Little League is coming up very soon. In fact, I believe their season starts shortly after January. So if we were to follow through with our normal procurement practices, that usually takes between six to eight weeks of letting out a, you know, seeking a solicitation for proposals. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the presentation over to our community services director. She's worked very closely with her parks manager to develop a strategy. And then when she's done, we'll have our public works director come up and talk about how we're gonna address the situations with the washes and try to get the washes back to the previous condition. With that, Ms. Goodwin.
Thank you. Mayor, council, we're gonna take sort of a broad look at where the park is currently, what happened that evening, and then where we'd like to go with it. I do have this presentation, and I'll be getting you guys copies to take with you to reference, or if you have other questions after, we can address those, too. Thanks, Liz. Okay, on the evening of October 2, 2018, actually, we had a council meeting that night. We left, and it was pouring down rain. The result is, as Grady mentioned, we had an unprecedented amount of debris and dirt and mud and other things flow through our park. This is an overview of the park a few days later. As you can see, two of the ball fields, the back two ball fields, those are ball fields number three and four, are pretty much completely submerged. A large portion of field number two is also affected. The field here on the left side, that's field number one, had some damage, but obviously significantly less than the other fields. So that's kind of what it looked like when we found it. It was quite the mess. Here's a few other photos. You can see the level of mud. It was knee-deep in certain areas. It took several days to dry before we could even get to certain spaces, particularly back near the dam. It took down fences. It took down, it moved, it moved through the space. It moved our bleachers. It moved trashcans. It was pretty significant. This is a look by our best guess. It reached roughly 34 inches high, so just about three feet of water came through there at one time. This kind of gives you a good idea. So what we have done since that time is we have tackled the beginning of the cleanup efforts on the ball fields and the surrounding areas. Currently underway, we do have the dirt and debris removal happening from both, from fields two, three, and four. Fences around two and three have been removed due to severe damage. One fence was completely taken down in terms of the water just pushed everything down. It was completely, it was unsalvageable is the best way to say that. Everything has been removed. The fields are currently locked at the best as we can to keep users off of them, to keep people safe, to keep people from causing more damage. There is access if they go below the caution tape or around it, but we're doing our best to keep folks off at this time. We have been able to reopen field one. That's their field that was, had the least amount of damage. It did have some, but we were able to get that up and operable so that we did have at least one field usable for practices and other activities. Most pathways around the ball fields and behind field one are also cleared and usable for public use for folks that are walking, that have dogs and things like that. So we are trying to get the park back to at least somewhat usable condition. Here's a few pictures. If you haven't been out there to see the cleanup efforts, it's a whole lot of dirt. It's a lot of dirt. It's a lot of debris. It's a lot of, we've had railroad ties. We've had umpteen million golf balls and softballs and other things, lots of things going on out there. So as we move towards our cleanup efforts on our ball fields and the surrounding areas, I'd like to think of the fields in three components. We have our turf, which is kind of the green space, right? That's our irrigation, our grass, our mowers, everything that revolves around the green space of the ball fields. We have our soil or our dirt, which is really our infield, our infield mix, our warning tracks, our bases, the plates, the pitching rivers, everything that happens on the infield, if you will. And then the third space is really the perimeter. That's our fencing, our backstops, our dugouts, our bleachers, everything that goes on around the exterior of the fields, if you can think of it that way. All three of these areas need to be addressed, and they really need to be addressed in tandem in order for us to cover as much ground as possible and make up as much time as possible in this restoration effort. So with that said, the turf, we need to remove all the dirt and debris. That's what we're working on right now. It's still a work in progress. We need to laser level all of the outfield to remove, the washout areas, the ruts, the divots, everything where all the water came pouring through created caverns. We need to level everything back out. We need to work and check our irrigation and repair anything as needed. We don't know how much damage has been done or will be done as a result of the cleanup efforts. We have a bulldozer essentially dragging our fields. They're working around our irrigation as best as possible. We're doing everything we can to be proactive, but we don't know how much irrigation damage has happened yet. Once the fields are clear, then we'll be able to operate that and see. Mowers and other machinery are in right now for repairs. If you're familiar with the park, you know we have a storage area below the restroom building. There's storage below, what's where we keep our mowers, our mule, our, all of our different machinery that drags and preps the fields, cuts the fields, all of that. That was flooded. That 34 inches of water that came pouring through there also flooded that space and made most of those machines, most of that equipment unusable. It's in for repairs right now. Once we get everything prepped and ready to go in the turf areas, we'll need to re-sod. That was one of the biggest questions that we grappled with. The situation is we have Bermuda grass, and as we know, Bermuda grass goes dormant in the wintertime. So if we want the fields to be playable in time for our Little League season, re-sodding is really our best option for that. Alternately, if we were to just rehab the existing Bermuda and reestablish it, it would probably be a June or July timeframe for those fields to be operable again. Moving into the infield or the soil area, the dirt, if you will. Same situation. We need to remove all of the dirt and debris. We need to be a little more tentative here. It's a different surface, so we'll be working with them to do that. And the same process needs to happen. We need to laser level all of the infields to remove the same situations. We had a lot of water run through there. It creates a lot of valleys, so we'll need to do that. We'll need to remove all of the damaged base plugs, the home plates, the pitching rivers, all of the materials that are out there. And then we'll need to bring in both infield and warning track mix, so the mix of the dirt. It's a special mix that comes in that's safe and it's usable for, say, softball, baseball, and the other uses on that space. So we'll need to bring that in and replace what was lost. And then we'll need to prep all three fields to meet both youth and adult league demands for both softball and baseball. So we want to get all three fields back up and usable for as many activities as possible. And along with that, we have our perimeter space. We talked about the grass. We talked about the dirt. Now we have everything that's around it. So we'll need to continue to remove all the dirt and debris from the sidewalks and the spectator areas. If you haven't been out there, that's no small task. It is caked in there. It's not just taking a blower, but it is shoveling and digging. It is quite an effort. We'll need the removal of the remaining fence and backstops. We'll need to reinstall the foul lines and the homerun fences around the ball fields. And then we will be doing removal and replacement of the damaged and lifted concrete that is around the ball fields. This project-specific is actually part of a CIP project that was already budgeted. We were already planning to do that. This incident has only exacerbated it and accelerated. We need to get it done. It is a liability. As part of that, we will be taking down the removal of trees between the ball fields. That is what is causing the concrete to lift and buckle. Also, several of the trees were damaged in the monsoons over the summer, so many of them need to be removed regardless for safety reasons, but they also need to be removed to make sure that we have, when we do reinstall the concrete, that we're protecting that longevity. So all three of these areas need to be moving in tandem. In addition, we'll have electrical repairs that we know of. We know of one issue. We're not sure we have other issues that we're gonna run into as we get going. We are gonna be replacing the backstops on all three fields. That is also a currently budgeted project in the FY19 Facility Replacement Fund. We were already planning to do that before this happened. Again, this storm has just exacerbated the issue. We knew that they were failing. It has just hurried that process up, so that replacement should be part of this process. In addition, we know we're removing trees. Trees are a, shade's a hot commodity out there if you're watching a ballgame. So as part of that, we're intending to do shade structure installation over the bleachers. Again, working within our budgeted funds for the backstops to do that. Again, installation in sequence with the concrete and the backstops all at the same time make the most sense to get this all done and have the space tip-top and ready to go. So here's the real, the question is obviously our financial impact. This is an estimate based off of real quotes that we have been able to obtain. This kind of gives you an idea of where we're at in terms of financial demand. We're estimating roughly $405,000 based on what we know. Many of this, there are some unknown variables, particularly the electric we talked about, the irrigation we talked about. We just don't know what we don't know yet until we can really dig in. But these are qualified estimates here for what we're looking at.
And Rachel, we did put in a contingency amount. Doesn't mean that we have to spend it, only if
Correct.
we find, for instance, that there's damage to the irrigation or electrical that we were not aware of.
Correct. That's really just our cushion to make sure that if we do find something, that we're able to address it in a timely manner. But yes, that's really only there if needed. I mentioned a few things, just so you guys are aware. I mentioned a few things that were already budgeted, that we already had planned to do, so we already have this $241,000. We already have those funds. Those are already something that were budgeted and approved for this fiscal year. That includes the, you know, again, the bases, the home plates, things like that, the backstop replacement, as I mentioned, the shade structures, and the concrete removal and installation. So this 241 is already accounted for. We already have those funds identified. So that is not in addition to what we're asking for, just to make that clear. So that takes care of the park. Is there any questions particularly about the park that I can answer before Justin talks about our washes and dams?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Magazine.
If I understand it correctly, I think you're saying the total cost isn't 405. It's more like 405 plus 240. Is that right?
Correct. If we were to use the full contingency up to the 405.
And just for clarification, Councilmember Magazine, it's, the 405 is in addition to the other number, just to make that a little bit more clear. So the 241 was already a budgeted number, something we needed to do this year for replacement items anyway, so it's the 405 on top of that. That makes more sense.
Yeah, so it was spending almost, what, 300, no, 600,000?
Right.
Keep in mind that the estimate that we originally had, the turnkey estimate that Grady referenced, that $600,000 number that came out at the beginning, did not account for any of the backstop replacements, the shade structures, the concrete, things like that.
I just have one other question, Mayor. As I look at all these numbers, and there are a lot of them, site cleanup, field mix, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, how did you go about getting those estimates?
We talked to individual suppliers to get an idea of what it would take, an idea of what it would cost us. These are
We also have ways of gauging. We just did the dog park a couple years ago with, for sod, and so we were able to compare that cost on a cost per square foot versus what the quote that came back, and we felt that that was a pretty good quote for what we paid back then. So the staff is validating numbers that come back versus what we paid historically. So we feel very confident that numbers are good numbers, and even if we did a full RFP process, the only thing that would help, what hurt us would be really, we're confident we can get those prices, but in the end, it's time, so.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Question? Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would question the irrigation number. And of course, I'm not a landscaper, but I don't know that you could replace all the irrigation in the park for $15,000.
I'm sure we can't replace all of it for $15,000.
It looks like to me, by the time you get the mud cleaned off two, three, and four, you'll virtually have no irrigation in those three fields left.
Hopefully, hopefully, that's not the case. We have been working with the contractor to flag. I know Kevin was out there last week at the end of the week, as well as possibly today, working on irrigation to try to flag and blow out and salvage the heads ahead of time so that we could mark them, know where they are, and plan for that. Again, trying to be a bit proactive ahead of the cleanup.
I had the same concern because we had some offers of, you know, could we get some earth-moving people and donate their services, but it's a little bit more of a fine art, what they're trying to do, gently scraping versus kind of like just going right at it, so.
I've been watching. So I see this 405 number. What's the outside that we're really looking at?
Well, based on the real-world numbers, the subtotal there obviously is our 329, and we do feel like we have a very good estimate based on what we're supplying here. The 76 is really worst-case scenario if we get out there and find damage that we couldn't have anticipated, something subgrade that we didn't know was there, that we didn't know, you know, maybe, I'm gonna use an example, is if our ASB builds aren't right and we find something below ground going, what the heck is this? This is nothing we've ever seen or accounted for before. So, I mean, again, we feel the 329 is a pretty firm idea, and that contingency is just built in because we've seemed to always have to, you always have the what-ifs.
And that's why I'm asking the very question. What if? What are we going to do if we spend the $405,000 and we are done?
Well, I can guarantee you, if we find, for instance, the irrigation is much more extensive damage than what we anticipated, and based on the cost estimate for that, it's gonna exceed the 405, we're gonna be back seeing you guys on this item. So I don't, what we were trying to do here was really pinpoint on an itemized listing of what these costs would be. One, to get a better handle on this, and secondly, to give you some assurance that we're gonna be pretty close to the number. You could very well be right. There's some unknowns, and it could be actually higher. So what I might suggest that you do is, if that's the case, we come back and advise you of that, and then you can tell us, you know, authorize additional funding, and we'll have to find some other sources for that.
What is this, Mayor?
Yes, yeah, sure, go ahead.
What is this, the timeline, the schedule to get the work done?
Well, that really is dependent on our procurement authorization this evening. If we have the authorization to move forward, our procurement process is a very functional process that we try to adhere to, but obviously, it has timetables administered with it. I mean, we work that in.
I think what Dennis, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown was getting at is the sequencing of events and have we got that scheduled for them to come forward, assuming the council gives us the authorization tonight.
Assuming we get authorization tonight, we'll be reaching out to vendors to coordinate implementation. Some of these, we need to order, we need to order supplies. They need to get things in stock in order to be ready to go. Ideally, we can make, we can get everything situated and ready to go. We're shooting for the end of January. A lot of that is weather-dependent on particularly
Shooting for the end of January to be complete by.
Correct.
Right.
But a lot of that is dependent on getting the supplies ordered in a timely fashion. We do have the holidays to contend with. We also have the installation of the sod, which is very fickle based on temperatures. So we'll work with Mother Nature.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three questions.
Uh-oh.
One, historically, have we had a water issue like this before with that park? And is it a risk? What is the risk of this happening again? Is what we're going to be doing in fixing these washes going to stop that from happening in the future? And third, with the irrigation unknowns, is there any possibility we can do artificial grass on those fields that would be similar to the high school football field, and you'd not have to worry about the irrigation in the future?
I can answer some of your questions. I don't know that I can give you assurances that everything
As far as the
The risk.
As far as the dam and the wash, let's hold off until Justin comes up, and we'll have him answer your question, okay?
The question about artificial turf has come up. The, we have, we have quite a bit of reservation. It's significantly more money in terms of upfront cost to put in. The maintenance on it is actually higher than we, than you would think. It also creates a very large heat island. It is very hot. It would not be usable in the summertime. If you, you can talk with the high school about the same issue. We've had several fields that are done in that capacity, and they are not, they're not usable during the summertime. They are much too hot. So there's another, we've evaluated that option extensively, to be fair, and it's not something that we're able to maintain either. I can't give you a cost on what it would cost. I don't know if Kevin can, if you have numbers, if you know, I know we've talked about it, but not off the top of my head, but we know it was significantly more investment.
I thought the football field was a million dollars.
It was.
I've also heard that players don't like playing on the artificial turf. I mean, they've come a long ways on it, but it's still, they prefer the actual grass.
Yes.
Councilman Legay?
Mayor, thank you. Rachel, I think the turf, artificial turf is an interesting and creative way of, you know, looking at all this, but I'm sitting here thinking, given the amount of damage and all that occurred, it would probably tear up an artificial turf, probably even more so than something that's organic. I mean, I don't know that, but it just, common sense dictates that would be in the same place regardless of whether it was artificial turf or not.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And I think we'll get to your other parts of your question, Art, in a moment.
Great, thank you.
There's nothing else? We'll get Justin up? Rachel, is that good?
Yes, I'm gonna hand it over to Justin.
So our public works director is gonna present his portion having to do with the dam and wash. If you don't mind, Councilmember Tolles, we'll have him present that, but then I want him to address going forward the future and what we can expect if this would ever happen again. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Walde.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for taking the opportunity to meet with us tonight. First, I would like to start on behalf of the town engineer and myself. We would like to report that Golden Eagle Dam functioned correctly, and as a result of this, property and lives downstream were not impacted, and that is very important to point out. We did have some minor issues with the outflow water, and the reason behind those minor issues is the unmeasurable amount of organic debris that clogged the two trash racks that prevent large debris from entering the dam structure and creating problems. With that said, did each of you receive a copy of this exhibit that's a little bit bigger so you can see it, the one that's on the screen now? Golden Eagle Park is primarily fed by three named washes. The wash that is on the north side up here is Ashbrook Wash. The one that comes across here in the center is Bristol. The one that comes across here on the south side is Cloud Burst.
Can you point out the street as well? It makes it a little bit easier.
This is Golden Eagle Boulevard. North is to the left of the screen. South is to the right. And east would be to the top of the screen. What we are proposing tonight is just to simply remove the large amount of debris that is on the face of the dam. That is along this area here. There is a large amount of sediment and organic matter along the face of the dam that ranges from three to four feet thick to up to six feet thick, and from as little as eight to 10 feet wide to about 25 feet wide. The reason for that is to reestablish the capacity for storage of water on the face of the dam. For those of you that are familiar with this area, you will note that there is a sidewalk that runs right along here. Just to the outside of that sidewalk is actually what we consider the storage area for the face of the dam. So this phase will primarily remove the sediment on the face of the dam. It will remove a large percentage, but not all of the sediment that is stored all along Cloud Burst Wash, which ends right here, but comes up here. It will also include the construction or rechanalizing of this little drainage area here that is impacted by a catch basin that drains Golden Eagle Boulevard, the drainage of the parking lot. And the intent with this first phase is to use the materials that will be moved from this drainage channel up to this area, stockpile that on the ball field side of the drainage channel, and build a berm approximately five feet high. Also, from the materials that will be removed from the site, the intent is to have the contractor screen them, utilize the screened material screen them, utilize the screened materials for site-made riprap. And then, this small berm that runs along here will then be a riprap lined on the opposite side of the ballpark. I refer to that as armored. Also, as part of this phase, we will be removing a large amount of sediment and debris that are piled up in this drainage channel. For those of you that have not been to the site, you will note that currently, several of the drainage channels are actually filled to above the turf and/or ballpark elevation. And should we have a storm before we have an opportunity to remove this, the majority of the water that comes from the three washes that feed this area will flow over this ballpark. So, our intent is to try and address this as soon as possible, and of course, that is hinged primarily on this discussion tonight and the direction from the mayor and council to staff. Please note that all of what we are proposing on the first slide is just to remove the sediment and debris in the channels and along the channels, and all the material that is piled up in front of the dam. I have primarily covered all of this slide right here while I was showing you that exhibit. This is what staff intends to propose for the future. What we are proposing is to build sediment drop basins. These will be relatively large excavations that go below the flow line of the wash. And what this type of structure allows is for water to flow into the wash. It enters the basin. The debris, meaning the sediment and the soils, will settle to the bottom as this area fills up. Then, the water ideally will just overtop and clear water and stay within the channel.
So, this is Councilmember Tallis's point. What are we gonna do to prevent this from happening again?
And I will answer your question to the best of my ability. I am not aware of anyone that could give a guarantee that this, this type of event will not happen again. The intent for what we're going to do now, and for the future, is to minimize future issues related to the ballpark. But it is, it's in a floodplain, and it's designed to catch all of this water and all of this debris. So, our intent is to minimize that and reduce the cost to have this type of work done in the future, and clearly, the damage.
So, Justin hasn't really gotten into that, but the next slide has more longer-term recommendation. Do you wanna go into that?
Correct.
So, as you could see here, one of the things we feel very strongly about is, we need to look at our, have an engineering study, look at our drainage, stormwater drainage for the whole town, but in particular, those that feed into this, this park. So, we wanna basically have, you know, the recommendations on what we would do to our washes. We have some erosion issues already with the washes, so we'd probably have those washes be reinforced with probably gabions or, you know, some other form of way of preventing the erosion so that that soil and dirt and debris doesn't flow through the washes and into the park. Drop structures, but again, that's gonna be part of a, an engineer's report and recommendations that come out of it, and that's gonna be a little bit more longer-term. So, what we're talking about right now is, we're gonna try to do the wash maintenance concurrently to what's gonna be restoring the park at the same time. And then, these are more longer-term things, but we're gonna need to get going on these. So, I want to actually get moving on the engineering study as soon as possible so we can start planning for some major improvements to our washes in that area.
The town engineer and I have already asked for some qualifications from a firm that is currently contracted with the Flood Control District that already has done the majority of the drainage report for all of the properties lying west of this area impacted by at least one of these washes, and the other two will not be that complicated. So, we are, we are gonna go through the statement of qualifications, and then we will come back to the town manager and the mayor and council for direction on that in the very near future. And since this slide was put together, I had an opportunity to meet with two contractors today, and my original estimate was under, for this preliminary work to remove the sediment, I had estimated approximately one hundred thousand dollars, and I, excuse me, I was mistaken. Their estimate is approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand. A hundred and fifty thousand of that is to remove the sediment, and approximately twenty-five thousand of it is to remove and dispose of the vegetation necessary to gain access to the washes and drainage channels and the face of the dam.
Okay, and then again, the source of funding for that would be coming out of the environmental fund, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I just have a question, just, just so I know the sequence of this. When you say future improvements, how future is the future? Like, getting back to what the vice mayor said, if we do all these improvements and we remove all the sediment, you know, okay, we usually don't have any of these big storms in the winters, usually during the monsoon season, but at what point are we in danger of doing this all over again and ruining what we did if we don't do the future improvements you talked about with these basins?
Madam Mayor, the town engineer and I would like to include this, at least an engineer's estimate, for the second phase in next year's budget.
Next year? That's after the summer?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that's what the vice mayor was concerned about, putting all this money into it, and then not, not doing enough to make sure that, you wanna?
I got a follow-up question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, in the beginning of this presentation, Rachel, you'd indicated that if we did all this quickly, if we move forward to try to make this season for the Little League, there would be a certain cost. If we had wait, if we waited, it wouldn't be completed till June, you'd probably miss the season. What's the difference in this cost? That's number one. And two, if we deferred this, and I'm not saying we are, I'm just, we're in discussion, is it possible that you look at the middle school fields that are currently, the Board of Education School District has that, right? Four Peaks, Four Peaks, we have a couple of parks over there that aren't currently being utilized as full-blown ball fields, but they could be, right? And where are all the other parks? If we were not able to fix this, if we didn't have the ability and the funding to do this, what would be the option? For these programs, what would happen?
Well, let me ask, let me answer your first question, was if we, if we didn't do this and we waited till the June-July summertime timeline, the difference there in terms of cost would be roughly eighty-five to a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. It's the, it's the cost of sod, is really what that number is. Everything else, that number, the numbers remain firm. We would have to eliminate something in order to bring that cost down. In terms of other ball fields, the middle school field is an option. The middle school team uses that, both the softball and baseball teams, as far as I know, use those fields. So, intermixing and trying to schedule practices and other things for Little League would take a bit of coordination with the school district. That being said, I also don't believe they're lit. I don't believe that they're lit fields over there, so that would limit options for evening. Additionally, the park, Four Peaks Park does have two ball fields. They are not in playable condition right now. They're just, they're not safe conditions. They have been, in fact, that's why we put in for a grant to redo them, because they are in a condition of dire need. They would need some serious rehab to get those into playable condition.
Then, Rachel, you had mentioned to me last week, the backstops and all those, the contractors that would be contracted to put in the backstops, they do a lot of work for school districts, and they do all their work in the summertime for the school districts, trying to get them ready for the fall season.
Correct.
So, we would probably be facing a very difficult time trying to get that done in the time period that we would want them to do.
Yeah, we would have to get in line behind a lot of the schools and a lot of the planning.
So, we're kind of off-cycle, taking advantage of the fact that they're not very busy this time of year.
Correct. You are correct. Thanks for reminding me of that. So, using the Four Peaks field would, would take money and rehab as well. So, we're kind of in a rock and a hard place there, in that those fields have not, are just not in a playable situation right now.
You have any idea how much this will cost, and when we could do it?
Mayor Kavanaugh, I do not have an engineer's estimate for that sheet.
Not even like a wild guess?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay.
The intent, if we can get an engineer's estimate and a set of sealed plans, would be to begin the work in late summer, which would be July, August, September. And Mayor Kavanaugh, to answer your question in regards to what if we didn't, with all due respect to the folks that utilize this park for playing ball, the sediment removal on the face of the dam and cleaning up the drainage channels is something that we simply cannot wait on. We need to address that to avoid the dam and the trash racks from being clogged from this debris, and then having water backed up in there and having to use the spillway.
Councilwoman Legay?
I share the same concerns that the mayor and the vice mayor had when you were going through the presentation, and my question was, what would that cost, Phase Two, if we could expedite that? And you've answered that, you've answered that question. So, for me, from an engineering perspective, when we look at the incident at the park, your first hit at this is the hundred grand come from environmental fee to remove the sediment, so forth and so on. I know you may not be able to answer this question, but what was the root cause for this event? In other words, if in fact, we address Phase One, does that address the root cause? And if we remove that, doesn't it decrease the likelihood of this event repeating itself?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Legay, the root cause of this is not on the town's property in Golden Eagle Park. The root cause of this is changes upstream on all three of these washes. And the result of those changes from this very strong rainfall in a short period of time brought more water into these drainage channels and created a lot of erosion on, not only in the washes, but on private properties and hillsides. And so, the root cause is far upstream. None of the material within this park, it's from the park. All of this is from north and west of this location.
However, engaging in Phase One, does that address the root cause? In other words?
It does not address the root cause, but it will reestablish the drainage channel width and depth and the face of the dam's storage.
And if you do that, that minimizes the recurrence of the incident at the amplitude or degree that occurred?
Absolutely. It'll minimize it substantially.
Yeah, 'cause I think what we're all talking about is, what is the risk in terms of investing these dollars in anything we do as a risk? When you look historically at how all of this is performed, we've never had an incident like this before. My sense is, if we can go to Phase One, it probably minimizes the probability of this event reoccurring with a pretty high, high percentage.
And if I may just chime in, and, you know, we're trying to be a little delicate here, not upset, you know, people, but one of the chief contributors here is the golf course. Sunridge Golf Course has sheet action that drains right into the washes, and they don't have any retention, detention, you know, on their golf courses. So, I'm sure that part of the study that would be done would be looking at that and seeing if there can be some partnerships with Sunridge and the town, because they need to hold on to some of their water before it actually just, just drains off of their golf course, right into the washes and into Golden Eagle Park. So, that's gonna be something that we'll look at as well.
Please note that when staff was putting together this report and determining what parts of the environmental fund we could use, that we, we did not utilize all of the funds that are earmarked for this, and the majority of those funds come from wash maintenance. And as you all know, or you may not know, we have wash maintenance that takes place annually, and we have a map for that. And so, the intent was to minimize the wash maintenance for this year. And to minimize it, we would then reduce the scope. We can certainly spend additional money and incorporate some of the debris drop basins into Phase One, if that is the direction that you would like to go. But we would not be able to go...
And by the way, when he's, he's talking about the wash maintenance, what he's really saying, 'cause it sounds kind of like counterintuitive, you're saying you're, you're gonna save on spending money on wash maintenance, but yet, we're telling you, you wanna do wash maintenance. What he's really getting at is, we go through and we clear a lot of the vegetation that's in the washes. So, in essence, it's done twenty-five percent a year so that, in theory, every wash, every four years, gets completely done.
We have approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars in that account for this fiscal year.
Councilwoman, Magazine?
I may be the only one, but I'm having trouble, having trouble with the numbers. You have two hundred and ten thousand there. We have two hundred and forty thousand.
He's looking at the last page.
I'm sorry?
No, I was just telling him where you were.
Oh, and we have two hundred and forty thousand in the budget, and yet, we're asking for five hundred and eighty thousand. I'm having trouble following this.
So, so, if I can jump in, okay, so this slide right here, and I think you have that with you, we're asking your authorization to procure services for five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in addition to the two hundred and forty-one thousand that's already authorized and approved in the budget for this year for replacement items at Golden Eagle Park. Does that make sense? So...
Makes sense, except it seems to be a moving target, so we're talking...
Well, the moving part, I cut off, I got completely off-guard before this meeting. I didn't realize the hundred thousand dollar number went from one hundred to one seventy-five until I got here, just like you.
I guess what I'm saying is, it sounds, I said six hundred thousand earlier, you said yes. Now, it sounds like it's considerably higher than that.
Well, what I was talking about before was the turnkey of just cleaning up the park, restoring the park, not the replacement items, and that was six hundred thousand dollars versus four oh five up there. So...
Bottom line.
Bottom line?
Doing everything we need to do. How much money are we talking about?
Two forty-one plus five eighty. I don't have my calculator in front of me, but that's...
Eight twenty-one.
Eight twenty-one, thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Eight twenty-one. But that's without the future.
Of which we are, I mean, the additional money we're having to spend is the five eighty. Justin, I think you've got a good point, but I think before we'd even spend that money, I mean, right now, we're asking for emergency authorization just to be able to do repair and restoration. I don't wanna confuse, you know, the other thing, so I'd rather come back to you guys at a later date, if there's gonna be additional expenditures that we do between the short term and the long term on the wash maintenance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I definitely think we need to do that.
I do, too. I, I just don't wanna give you funny, funny map numbers.
As Justin said, even if there's a minimal amount that can be done sooner, rather than waiting till after another monsoon season.
So, what you heard him say, what you heard the Public Works Director say, is that he's going to basically line and put in riprap where we have vegetation and erosion going on in the washes at the park right now that feed into Golden Eagle. So, that's definitely gonna be an interim step. It's gonna be better than what we had before the storm system that we had this past year. Then, more, if he, he's suggesting that maybe we do some reinforcements that even are before you get into the long term. I still think we need to come back and have you guys study this before we get into some really theoretical things and having you give us authorization on. I don't feel comfortable myself with that tonight.
Anything else?
I'm sorry.
Councilman Magazine?
So, we're talking, you're recommending eliminating three programs totaling four hundred and five thousand. We have two forty-one, which we're gonna spend, so there, we're up to seven, three-quarters of a million right there. Is that correct? Am I reading this correctly?
Six point six.
Six point six?
Of, okay, we're talking about, I see where you're coming, but I also wanna make sure that we understand... sure that we understand new money. New money, we're asking for sources of money to help pay for this. We've got 241,000 already authorized, so we, let's take that off the table so we don't confuse that. We've got $405,000 that we're wanting to defer capital improvement projects. We've got the alleyway paving at 255,000. We have sidewalk infill at 100,000. And we have the Fountain Hills Civic Center Drainage Project at 50,000. They total 405,000. So we would be substituting, instead of doing those projects, we'd take the money for those projects and plug it into the park repairs and restoration.
Okay.
And then the 175,000 that Justin has up there, the environmental fund, we would go ahead and reduce what we spend on clearing the washes with vegetation by that amount. And then we'll come back later at a later date to the council with probably a midterm kind of recommendation, not to be confused with midterm elections, just, I know that's a sore subject around here, but with a, kind of a, we're dealing with near-term, midterm, and long-term solutions. So we'll come back, I think would make sense, rather than kind of, you know, hypothesizing what we might be doing.
Okay. Councilman DePorter.
Question on deferring alley paving. I forgot what year it was that we're like going to get in trouble for not paving the alley.
Yeah, I struggle with this because, you know, I think we've got probably another year. It was hard to get that money, as you remember, because it was a divided council on that. So that was a sacrificial lamb. So this is what we had when we were trying to come up with the sources. So we had projects that were already underway, Fire Station, Darrell Canyon. We had grant projects, like the shoulder widening. We have restricted funds, funds that are being used from the street fund can only be used for street projects. So we've got all that going. So we were kind of limited on what we can come up with. I know that I've heard from a couple council members before tonight's meeting, they, you know, they've read the newspaper, Leadership Academy, members there, you know, they're concerned about pedestrian safety. So the sidewalk infill is very important to them. So I heard from Councilmember Legay, he was wondering if we could find another source of funding to still allow us to do the sidewalk infill. So one of the things that we came up with was that we can use the street fund to pay for that, but that the general fund money that was originally paying for the sidewalk infill can be used for this, though. It's a domino effect. I'm really sorry. So the sidewalk infill is 100,000 of general fund money. Instead of using general fund money to pay for that, we can use the street fund. Street fund can be used for streets and sidewalks and things like that. That frees that up. That still allows the sidewalk infill project to go forward, as proposed.
But the street fund already is inadequate.
It is inadequate, but we also have a situation where we haven't been able to spend all of the money that we have appropriated because, you know, the pavement management study and all that kind of put us back. So anyways, it's, nothing, as you can see, is easy here. It's like, I keep saying, it's like a mother that has 50 bucks trying to buy groceries and the kid keeps trying to put on the candy bars on the, you know, and the mother's trying to be nice, but saying, no, you can't, you know, and I'm sorry, I'm not saying you guys are like mothers or like I'm a mother. I'm just saying, it's very challenging to try to get the money.
Councilman DePorter.
So my question was just to make sure, as long as we're keeping an eye on before we approach any penalties from the EPA or whoever's making this pavement to be given.
It's MAG, and we think we can go another year. Again, these are recommended deferral of projects. We would, you'd see them again when you see the budget for next year.
Great. And then I just wanted to second, or just echo the idea of the sidewalk infill program. I think the walkable city is so important, and I did see that the Vision Group was looking at that.
And just to let you guys know, too, it might have just slipped under the radar because it was on consent, but last council meeting, you authorized CK Engineering to evaluate the intersection of Verdi River and Avenue of the Fountains. They're the same ones that, you remember, did the presentation on the improvements right across street from the post office. So they're looking at an all-way, four-way stop at that location as well as, and I hate to say this, but putting through a crosswalk between the medians that probably should have been designed that way from the get-go. So...
And then finally, Mayor, it was, and it may be an item for future discussion, and you know, certainly my time is short here, but they, I came from the National League of Cities Conference, and there was four of the sessions that I actually went to and listened very intently. They were talking about the number one frustration with working with cities is the procurement process. And I know there, it's just and it's there for a reason, but if there's something to consider to, you know, if Aaron's looking for something to dig into, maybe there's something, some tightening up there where we can shorten some of these time windows. I know it's not going to help us tonight, but just something in the future to look at if there's any way.
That's a very, that's a very good point. I think we can look at that. One way we do, and you see this a lot, is we have CPAs. CPAs are cooperative purchasing agreements. So that saves us from having to go out and do a solicitation or an RFP. But I think you're right. I think the time is, let's look at what we can do to free up the time lag on these.
Vice Mayor, did you still have something?
You know, I'm just curious whether or not there's been any discussions with the organizations that use these fields and if there's anyone here that's representing any of them that has anything to say about this and what their feelings are as to the importance of moving forward, or if there's any possibility that they can have alternative means of having a season with other fields in town, knowing that this is an incredibly expensive project. We just went through an election that the majority of this town is very, very sensitive in regards to expenses that we are incurring. And it, I feel like we're rushing through this to try to get it done, and it's costing excessive amount of money to do so. So I'm just trying to get a sense of the conversations that have been taken place and what's the economic impact of our community if we were to wait just a little bit deeper as to where we're going here.
Have we heard anything from the teams or anything from Little League?
I can speak on two halves of that. The conversation with the Little League is, everything that I have heard and spoken with in terms of the representation is very much, well, it'll get fixed. They're anticipating this being fixed in time for their season. And that's, that's impression that I've been received, that I've let them know that we'll be here tonight to talk about the cost, the impact. And there seems to be a, probably a misnomer, that there is a slush fund or a contingency fund that can manage this.
Slush fund.
That can manage this. And I keep trying to say, no, that's not really the case.
Alan, Alan has the slush fund.
And I've been correcting that misconception. However, that seems to be the prevalent feel from everyone that I have talked to. Again, this isn't an anecdotal basis. I happened to run into them outside of Safeway the other night. So we did have this conversation. In terms of economic impact for us as a department, we have actually been able to, over the last two years, increase usage of Golden Eagle Park tremendously for tournament usage. And that includes baseball. A lot of, a lot of baseball tournaments have come in, as well as senior softball tournaments. We have been able to increase, I want to say, almost fourfold what we were bringing in about three to four years ago. So we have increased that tremendously. Unfortunately, we've had to cancel three tournaments that were scheduled for November and December. We've already reached out to a number of tournaments that come in through the spring season based on spring break. Each weekend that we host a tournament is roughly valued at $2,000 to $3,000 in revenue. So again, doing math, if we have to cancel 10 more, you know, that's roughly $20,000 to $30,000 in revenue that we are turning away. What's unfortunate is that this, we have worked so hard to build this reputation of being a tournament-level facility, that once they find alternate locations, we're afraid they won't come back because they found new homes. So we are working to maintain our reputation in that community. The one question I did have was, but there's a, I don't know if there are fields over on Fort McDowell. I do know Salt River has fields. I don't know if they would be usable for the Little League purposes or not. I don't know if they're permanent base distances, things like that. Our field number one obviously is open, like I said, for use, but it does not have adjustable base distances for our little guys. It is permanent distances and it is a permanent mound. So it's not an adjustable format.
Councilman Legay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's a tough situation and, you know, kind of taking in everything I'm hearing. At the end of the day, this is the hand we have been dealt, and we need to deal with it. Having lived in this community for as long as I have, you don't mess with the Little League. You don't, you don't mess with these parks. I can't tell you how many people have come before us in testimony with respect to any disruption that's particularly occurred there. You know, we're in the business of public service, and Golden Eagle Park is, is used by a tremendous amount of our constituents. There's risks associated with everything. I think after hearing Justin's conversation, I think the first phase of the project is going to enhance what we, will lessen the probability of a recurrence of all of this. And Phase Two may, we find, be overkill. It might be a nice thing to do. So just in summary, if I may, just to get the numbers correct, what you're asking for is 405 to address improvements at Golden Eagle Park. The staff presentation I have in front of me says $100,000 for, from environmental. That's gone up to 175. And Craig, typically, what do we bring in from our environmental fund annually?
About half a million, isn't it?
Councilman Legay, it's about a half a million dollars, 480,000.
There's some wiggle room there if we need to go to Phase Two and not cut back tremendously on wash maintenance. So I feel comfortable moving forward with this. It's the hand we've been dealt. It's a risk we need to take. It's a matter of public service, and we all know Golden Eagle Park is, it's interesting that it's golden. I mean, it's just a very important park. The only thing I would like to recommend, and I think our town manager alluded to it, in light of the pedestrian fatalities that we've had recently, I've sat on this council for a number of years, where we have deferred sidewalk infill year in and year out. And I'm not sure what the map looks like. We definitely need to focus on downtown as Councilman DePorter mentioned, this whole notion of our vision and walkable downtown. And I know that's been important when we had the downtown discussion. So my thought is, what I'd like to recommend is what the town manager suggested, is that, and Alan, I'll try to make it clear, on the sidewalk infill, basically, the money for that would be utilized for park improvements. But then we would take $100,000 from the general fund and use it to...
You mean from that street fund?
From the street fund, the HERF fund. And it would be the HERF fund that would be used for sidewalk infill, because that's an appropriate usage of the HERF fund. So I feel very comfortable with the recommendations this evening with that stipulation and that change to maintain the integrity of sidewalk infill. And if you look at the project description, even before we had fatalities, the projections were that we're operating on a thin line and very unsafe and hazardous conditions for a walkable town. So thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Councilman DePorter?
One more time. I think, you know, based on the, I agree with Councilmember Legay, based on the potential loss of revenue that we could be looking at with unbooking some tournaments that go there, and then the cost associated with getting Four Peaks and other parks ready to do it, I just, I think it's in our duty to get this ready for the town. And I'm not just saying that as a Little League parent. That would get in trouble for not.
There you go.
I'm just, I'm saying it as, you know, a citizen who really thinks that we should get it done. I don't feel like the cost is going to be that difference once we do all the other work to get it up to speed.
Well, the real negative side is if you don't do it and we get hit with another storm without cleaning it up, it's just going to be worse. I mean, we know that. We're kind of stuck with, we absolutely have to clean it. It's just too bad we didn't have enough to complete the job.
I'm happy to make a motion whenever you want.
Okay. Is everybody done? Everybody's kind of, you got one more?
Yes. I want to make sure that what I'm about to say is not misunderstood. I do not blame anyone, any of our citizens, who after looking at analysis and so on, determined that they were not in favor of a primary property tax. That's their judgment, and perhaps we didn't tell the story adequately. But when we did talk about it, we talked about unforeseen circumstances. And we talked about things like, what if the liner at the lake has to be, we have to have a new liner, or something happens to a pump or whatever. I don't think anybody anticipated anything like this. And that's, therein lies the problem, that we can't anticipate everything. And I think we're doing the best we can under very difficult circumstances. That storm was totally unforeseen. Doesn't mean we won't have another one. So, but in conclusion, I want to compliment the staff. This is a very complicated situation, very complicated. And I think the staff did a terrific job dealing with it and coming up with reasonable recommendations.
Mayor, I agree. The only really question, I suppose, is, which hasn't been answered, but I suppose there isn't an answer, because there isn't any contingency plan for these organizations to have any other fields in usage and what they're going to do. They expect it to be fixed. So, but what I heard was, in a course of a four-month period, we're spending an additional $100,000 to make sure it's done on time. That's what I heard. And if everyone is on board with that, then fantastic. And, you know, great. And we do have a responsibility to, of service to our constituents in this community. But 80% of them aren't playing ball on that field. And there are going to be other expenses that come up for this community. There are going to be other emergencies that are going to come up. And I commend the staff as well for coming up where we're going to come up with this money. But I have a feeling you're going to have to figure it out again. And we're going to have these discussions again, and we're going to have to make motions again to pass. And I just hope we don't end up bankrupting our community by making hasty decisions, trying to move forward too quickly and spending too much money in the process. So I'm all in favor of the Little League, and I had six kids, most of which played in the, and by all means, I would never want to jeopardize that or anything that we do for our youth. But at the same time, we have to look at this budget. We have to look at the finances of this town. We have to be realistic with our monies. If I had a basement in New England and I had a floodwater damage, I wouldn't redo the basement without having French drains put in and making absolutely sure that it's not going to happen again in another year. So this is a decision that I'm in favor of doing everything we can to provide for our community. And if this council wants to move forward and spend the extra money to make sure it's done by January, I'd love to see opening day come beginning of February. But the community needs to know that we're sacrificing a lot of things and we're doing our very best with a very, very limited budget. We don't have a slush fund in this community. So, thank you. Mayor, if I may, I'm trying to find a silver lining here. And I think...
You'll throw the first ball.
I did it at Fenway Park once, but...
That's cool.
Not on the ball field. It was in the stands, but...
Okay.
What I was trying to say is, the silver lining is that if anyone has been involved in trying to get a construction project done, costs are increasing monthly. And my thinking is if we wait six months for this project or four months for this project, based on my own personal experience, we might be looking at a heavier price tag. Councilman Brown, you want to chime in on that?
It's not getting, it's not getting any better at all. Our labor force is already depleted. And with the fires that are going on in California right now, you might as well just plan on losing another handful of our labor force. And as far as the heavy equipment operators that we've got working over in the park right now, talented men, and we're lucky to have them. But I could, I can see that we're not talking about $800,000. We're talking about a million dollars before we get all the projects done that we need to get done to prevent what we've got. And I totally agree with Councilmember Legay... And I totally agree with Councilmember Legay that the sooner we do it, the better, because it's not going to get any cheaper for a long time.
Silver lining, that's all. So I don't disagree with the Vice Mayor on it, but that's just a thought I had.
All right. Then I think Councilman DePorter wants to make a motion.
I move to authorize the town manager to institute emergency procedures as outlined in Section 3-3-25 of the Town Code in order to expedite the repairs and restoration of Golden Eagle Park and approve the reallocation of funds resulting from the deferral of projects from fiscal year 1819, CIP.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may clarify...
And is that, I was just going to ask, is that, taking into consideration the stipulation from Councilman Legay as to where the sidewalk infill money comes from?
Oh, yes, I'm all for it.
Okay. That's including the Legay extra. Okay, good. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And Liz, were there any speaker cards? Okay, then a motion is second, and we've had lots of discussions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, staff.
Excellent.
Great job.
And just need a motion then to adjourn?
I'm opposed.
Second?
I can say, I saw you right there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.